Welcome to the April 3rd, 2024 School Committee Meeting. District Vision: The Barnstable Public Schools educates the whole child by creating a student-centered school culture that addresses students' physical, social, emotional, and academic needs by creating a safe and healthy learning environment in which students are challenged, supported, and engaged. Core Values: In Barnstable Public Schools, we value commitment, collaboration, and community. Commitment: We are dedicated to the continuous learning and growth for all. Collaboration: We work together while keeping student needs at the center of all decision-making. Community: We build strong, respectful partnerships that support student success. Item 1.2, Statement by the Chair: Video or Audio Recording of Meeting. This School Committee meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the Tana Barnstables Government Access Channel. In according with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20, the Chair must inquire whether anyone else is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence known. Item 2.0 is Highlights in Education. They're running a little bit late, so I'd like to move down to conduct routine business, if that's okay? All right. Item 3.1, Student Envoy Report.
Hi.
Hi.
So, the SAT is done, at least the March?
March, yep.
Yep. The March one. The scores are already out. According to the students, the math section was really hard. It was one of the hardest SATs in a while. But the scores came out pretty decent, ranging from 1,200 to 14-ish. So they were pretty good.
It was also like the first online SAT that has been run, so for like being the first time, it went well. Spring sports just started, so that's really fun. Every, most sports are having their first games this week. My game got canceled, but Friday.
Sure.
Hopefully. Yeah, so it's all going really good. The new coaches are working out really, we got a new coach for lacrosse. She's working out really good so far.
We don't know about the soccer coach yet, but that's coming, coming in the school year. Also, the Principal Search Committee is underway. I'm, I'm on it. I'm on the key of, you know, I'm really excited. It seems really in-depth. I haven't been to a meeting yet. We have one next week on Wednesday, and we're looking over the applications. I read it. I know what's going on. That's really exciting. I'm really excited to be involved.
Third quarter ends tomorrow, so nice, like home stretch of the school year.
Yeah.
So like, a lot, a lot of kids are rushing to get their grades in. It's going good. This quarter was hard, but.
Yep. We're rushing to get our grades. We have a test tomorrow on the last day, so we're really excited for that. Next is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges came in for a tour and a student panel. So, three students from Student Ambassadors were picked to show them around the school and the facilities. And then two extra showed up as little friends, because some of us were nervous. And then the, we had a student panel. They asked us some questions about the school, about how we felt about our learning environment and all around. It was a really good experience for students, because they got to express their opinions. And also for, I think it was a really good experience for the members of Niask, sorry how you pronounce it, Niask, because us of a, the, mhm. Us, the people who were speaking, the students who were speaking were very eloquent, and I feel like we expressed our opinions very well. And it was very good.
This Friday, me and Paloma, along with the Student Council Head and the History Department Head, are getting sent to the State House to participate in Student Government Day, where we simulate legislature at like the state level and learn more about how that works. So we're excited to see how that goes. And that's gonna be a really cool opportunity.
We're really excited to see how it goes, because we don't know anything. We were just looking at the website, and our advisor was like, "Do you guys want to do it?" And we were like, "Yeah." And then it's, it's on Friday, and we still don't know what we're doing.
What I said is all I know.
We have to support a, like, a bill?
Yep. That's it.
That's all we know. But that concludes our notes. We are gonna update on Student Government Day and whether it was a disaster or not next time. And we're really excited for this quarter to end, because it was rough. The third quarter's always really bad. We're hoping next quarter is a little better, especially with AP exams. Hopefully, teachers get a, go a little easier on us, but we'll see. Thank you.
Thank you.
School Committee Comments?
When you're at the State House, you can always ask for some more money coming our way. Feel free to do that.
Will do. Will do.
Yes.
It's a good, it's a good report. The feedback that the SAT was challenging. I'm glad we have good energy right now, going towards, towards the end of the year. But again, with SATs, you're competing against every other student in these United States for those top spots. And so, it's supposed to be challenging. And in terms of your AP classes, I don't anticipate your students, your teachers are gonna lighten up on you or anything of that their nature, because again, it's that preparation, it's that preparation for, for, for the college experience. So, I'm glad to hear this report about the SATs as the students are taking them. Please continue to let us know. You guys brought a lot of good energy into the beginning of the meeting, which is tremendous. But it's those two, it's those, that counterbalance, again, coming towards the end of the year, that seriousness of purpose, that we're, yourself and then your fellow upperclassmen need to maintain to finish the year strong. And the reason I say that, you know, coming from the education background, you know, is that you do want to cross every T, dot every I, to make sure that you get those placements that you're looking to secure, whether it be college, your career path, or service in our armed forces. So very good report, and I appreciate the energy.
And we'll definitely, you know, about the future SATs, because Riley's taking it in May, and I'm taking it in June, so we'll have some insight.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate the report. All right, I'm gonna circle back and see if everybody's ready for Highlights in Education, or if you need a minute. You're good? Okay. We have our Taiwan and Hong Kong field trip report.
I'm Sloan Contrino. I'm a senior. I was on the Taiwan trip this year. I did four years of Chinese, 8th grade through 11th grade, and this year I'm doing an independent study, because there was no Chinese 5 or AP Chinese, but I love it so much, and I want to study in college, so that's what I decided to do this year.
Hi, I'm Diane Mazerith. I'm also a senior, and I think I've taken like four years of Chinese. I was, I was gonna be a TA, but it didn't work with my schedule. But in college, I'm looking to continue my Chinese education. And, yeah, that's it.
So, this was our first day of the trip. We went to a high school in Taiwan, kind of outside the city of Taipei, and we interacted with students who spoke English as well as Taiwanese. And we kind of exchanged just like our experiences in high school and got to practice speaking Chinese, and they got to practice speaking English. Some of us made really strong friendships, so we still talk to them like every day on Instagram DMs and stuff.
Yeah, there's not much else to say. Oh, we did do a lot of sports over there, like, they have like a recess at their school, so we were doing like jump ropes. Some people were playing basketball, volleyball.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun. Visiting the school, it was really interesting, you know, like in, oh, that's me. I messed that up. Yeah, I realized how bad I am at jump roping. Yeah, so it was really cool to see their high school and, you know, compare our experiences, talk about how student life is different. And like, you know, you only get so much feel for the culture through class, you know, watching videos and having discussions with Wu Lao Shu. But when we're actually there in that setting, we get to interact with people our age, you get a whole different perspective. And, yeah, it really just connected what we've been learning for the past four years to real life.
Yeah, I also wanted to add that, like, a lot of the times, you think like they're very like strict, like serious and obvious, like about their education, which they are. But it also just felt like they're almost like normal people, like students like us, like they have like sort of the same hobbies and interests.
Yeah, I was honestly experiencing, I mean, expecting more of a culture shock when we got there, but everyone was so kind and welcoming, and the students were so happy that we were there. That last video that was just showing us doing TikToks with them, they love TikTok. We learned so many dances. Yeah, and that's like one of their classes in their school. They have like a dance elective, and it's just really cool. They were showing us all their interests and all their sports that they do. They don't have like formal sports teams at their school, but all of them are so athletic, and during their break times, we're playing volleyball and basketball with them all, and they're way better than us.
Yeah. Also, they're, they have like this like pet class, like, that we, we got to see a cat, so that was nice.
This was us in Taiwan, in the, in the city center. It's kind of like a Times Square sort of thing, like, but more for locals, less touristy. We did a lot of navigating the subway and transportation, which was really cool, because we did a unit on that in Chinese class, but we actually had to sort of put it to the test. And you'll see, like, on the top of the subway, it reads backwards, like opposite of how English does. So, you know, thank, thank God we had Wu Lao Shu with us, because it would get confusing, but it was so cool. And you know, while you're in the subway and sitting waiting for the train to come, it's just really interesting to observe how people behave and like the Japanese influence of people's culture, how, like compared to mainland China, they're just much more humble and like kinder almost compared to how we've learned people in like Beijing or Hong Kong would be. But yeah, it was really interesting, because I know myself and a lot of the other seniors this year, one of our main things that we were looking at for colleges was whether or not they had a Chinese program or study abroad opportunities for Chinese-speaking territories. And I always knew that was something I was interested in, but now that I've actually been to Taiwan and been in that environment, I realize that it's not that scary and it's not that different. And I'm just so grateful that I got to experience that.
Yeah, and it was, I think it was also the first time she led us off on our own.
Yeah.
It was just like really cool to see, like, what was there.
It was scary. They could tell the first time I let them out by on their own, and it's just very, very nervous, and I start yelling, because they know when I raise my voice. But after that, they are so good. They're like really, really good. I don't want to just interrupt her for a second. We, I got, oh, sorry.
We got so many compliments, so many, including our tour guide, our trip manager, the restaurant owner, the bus drivers, people who hosted us, the hotel. Like, I constantly got feedback, because I was already, because you know, when they were with me in my class, they're like, sometime whining, like, nah. And I was like, okay, be on time and do this, do that. They are super respectful. They showed who they are. And I told them, like, you know, before we leave, you gotta show who you are, not only representing yourself, our school, our state, but also our country. When they know we're Americans, and they're gonna think, you know, you have bad behavior, that's not good. But I got so many compliments. My trip manager said, who did so many student trips within the US and outside US, and she said, "We're the best group she has ever seen," where our students are very flexible, resilient. And that's a word she used. She said, "Well, a lot of kids we have on the road will say, you know, 'I don't like that, it's not good,' or, 'Oh my God, I don't, I don't feel comfortable.'" Our kids are very tough in a way, very resilient, and I'm so, super, super proud of Barnstable students.
All right, so the Tai Chi, I think, was it like an elementary school that we went to, Lauren? So, yeah, that was pretty hard. Yeah, I'm not very fit, so that was an experience. It was actually really relaxing, and afterwards, they brung us in, and one thing they did was like, we took off our shoes before going to the classroom. So I guess, they're very like clean, and even the subways, you, you don't like, you can't really eat or like drink in them. But afterwards, we had like tea, oh, I found, there's this type of tea, it's called Sunmoon Tea, I loved it. And I had it like constantly as much as I could. And there was also some, I think, Taiwan snacks, and there's like these almond cookies that were pretty like famous there. I, I brung some for my family to shine. They said it was dry, but I liked it.
Yeah, this is, oh, back to the Tai Chi. That was one of the hardest workouts I've ever done in my life. It was like Pilates, but on, on steroids. You stand like this with your arms out, and it seems like so easy and laid back, but after 30 seconds, you start burning, and you're supposed to hold it for like 120 seconds. And we were all looking at each other like, holy crap. And these old people that were the Tai Chi, like instructors, they, at the end, they were like, "Guess how old we are?" And we were all like 60, 55, and they're like, "We're 75, we're 80." And we're like, yes. And then when I got home, I was like, "I wonder how much fitter and more flexible and strong I would be if I continued to do this?" It was, it was really interesting, eye-opening. You know, made us reflect on ourselves as Americans and, you know, what we could improve on. The food was a huge part of the whole trip. Some of us were more adventurous than others. I personally did not try the pig feet or the octopus. That freaked me out a little. But there was so much variety and so many things that I never thought I'd try. This is me and Shelby, she's a junior. We were at the night market. So it's kind of like, just a, it's like a farmer's market, but at night, and instead of fresh produce, there was lots of fresh produce, the fruit was so good. But there was lots of like fried food and street food, and we kind of just got to try everything. It was so good.
In that video, I think we went to a very, like, very, very famous dumpling place. Like, the wait times are like extremely long. I think it's in the Taipei 101 building, which is like pretty famous, like shopping, like attraction center in Taipei. And going back to the food, I, I'm, usually when I'm here at home, I'm not adventurous at all. Like, the only thing I eat is pretty much like Brazilian or just like normal American food. So like my family's like, "Oh, she's not gonna eat anything." But I, I try to like try everything, even though I'm like not like the biggest seafood fan and stuff like that. And I was really surprised, because I really liked pretty much everything I ate. And, yeah, no, it's like, like the fruits there are like super fresh, and I also tried, and like picture, there's like a, what, it was like a mango shaved ice. Yeah, I tried that, and oh my God, it was so good. And also, did not really know how to use chopsticks before that. The only experience I had was our chopsticks competition at school. So it was a very, it was, it was a journey, a chopstick journey there. All right, so yeah, in the pictures, we went to a pla, a very famous lake called Sunmoon Lake, and we also went to a very famous like mountain, Ali Mountain. And it was actually, it was very crowded in Sunmoon Lake, but it was like very nice and expensive. And I think at one point, we went on a boat ride throughout the lake, and we got to walk around this, like, I think there was like a piece of land that we could walk around, and there was like, I think there was a traditional dances going on, and then also like some shops you could walk around, it got some souvenirs.
Yeah, so we spent a lot of time in the city, but this part of the trip, when we were at Sunmoon Lake and Ali Mountain, we spent basically those whole three days in nature, and it was so cool, because we spent, you know, three days in the city, experiencing more of, you know, like visually seeing what it's like to live there. But then when you're in the nature, it gives you a whole different perspective on, you know, it's just beautiful. And we did some hiking, I don't, are there pictures of that?
We do, I didn't put in there.
Yeah, we did some hiking.
No, I couldn't keep up with them, because they're so fast. I tried to work out a variety for Taiwan, but like, it didn't work out. So our trip manager and guide, I, I held all their jackets and backpacks and said, "Right there, we'll wait for them to return." But it's like, yeah, they hiked like almost two hours on a mountain with altitude like that, and we didn't get to see the sunrise, which we woke up for that, but it was really cool to see the nature over there. It's very different.
All right, just one last thing about the mountain, the stairs are endless. It's like, oh, I understand why a lot of people might be fit over there.
We went to a traditional puppet theater and museum. We didn't even know this was on the agenda. We got there, and they, they had us do our own kind of reenactments of traditional Chinese puppet theaters. It was one of the most interesting parts of the whole trip, first of all, because we weren't expecting it. And then we got there, and we were like, "Oh, this is so cool." And they showed us old videos of, you know, like dating back to hundreds and hundreds of years ago, how they used it for entertainment and to inform people about things. It was just really interesting, and that wasn't part of like one of the cultural units that we've done, even in Chinese. So, there was a lot of new information that we learned while we were there that we hadn't even learned in class.
I do remember that one, I think one time in class, we watched this one movie, I forgot what it was called, where there was a traveling like shadow puppet group. Yeah, To Live. So it, like, I somehow remembered that, and it was like, it was another connection from what we learned in class, even though we didn't talk, it wasn't like a huge unit or like, you know, lesson. Oh, so, so we went to preschool, and I will say, they're, they were so adorable. And what we did there was, we would read them books, and I think there was this riddle thing, both in like Chinese, and the kids would try to guess what it was, then an American version, where we would guess and try to get them to say it out loud. It's like, almost like trying to teach them through like those activities, and it was, it was so cute, honestly.
Yeah, so, we were reading them stories, and I think their teacher said that they would understand English hearing it, but they weren't, you know, apt at speaking it yet. But it was really funny to see these kids, they were so excited that we were there, and when we left, they were so sad. One of them was crying, and they kept hugging us. It was so cute. Yeah, it was pretty awesome. You know, and like you compare like education here versus there, all the similarities and differences. It's just really, really cool to see how other countries do things, and like comparing our experiences to theirs. Yes. So, overall, that's probably the most fun I've ever had, like the highlight of my high school career. And, you know, like, it was a small group of us, it was like 10 kids, but by the end of it, we were all friends with each other, and some of us had, hadn't even been in the same class as before, but we knew each other, and it just made us all so excited for, you know, like future trips and going into college and going abroad with a group of people and, you know, like the unique experience of learning while also like forming relationships. It was just a really, really cool experience.
And, yeah, it was, it was, it's probably gonna be the highlight of, it's definitely the highlight of my high school career, and, but I feel like it's just like an unforgettable trip, and I don't think I would have gotten it like in any other like group, if that makes sense. And I, I feel like I learned a lot, and also, I feel like my listening skills might have improved, at least in Chinese, because like, the most we have here is like videos, and that can only do you so much. And like, and I think character recognition, like you, you get like used to what you see there. So it was a great learning experience, too, and I, I loved it.
One more thing that I think is important that everybody knows. When we got back, I don't, Diane, did people keep asking you about, like, how, how did it feel because of like the China-Taiwan conflict? Did it feel safe? Like, was there tensions? Because everybody asked me that, and I was like, "Not at all." Everyone was so kind and welcoming to us, and you didn't really get that vibe at all that they weren't welcoming. And I, in terms of safety, I never felt safer walking in the cities there. We were commenting on this while we were there. Because they are, you know, so strict about weapons and drugs and all those things, they're, you don't feel like you go out in public and there is crime and you feel threatened, especially as a girl, like we're walking, and we're like, we can go to the bathroom in a foreign country by ourselves and not feel in danger. It was really, really interesting. And, yeah, it was cool.
Oh, one more thing. One more thing. As a teacher in Barnstable for 12 years, I really, really appreciate the opportunity that School Committee and our Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent let us go. I know this is gonna be a, like, it was a tough decision to do it. It takes a lot of courage and vision as well, because I've heard story from other schools, you know, like I constantly kept communication with other schools' Chinese teachers, and they were all having certain obstacles of taking students, even to Boston, like Chinatown. They, they, they had so many, how do I say, like considerations before they approve a trip or something. So, I, I really appreciate everyone here who trusts our program, who trusts me personally as well, to take the students out on a trip that, that far away. So, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Questions and comments? Jen?
That's awesome. I'm, I'm an avid traveler, and I hope this sparked the bug for you guys, because, you know, when you travel the world, it, it just dissolves racism, it dissolves the divides that were, it dissolves the news, like the Taiwan-China thing. You know, I mean, it's, it's such an awesome opportunity, and to just develop that kind of like healthy respect for other cultures, and realize that they also might have a healthy respect for yours. It's an excellent way to just feed your curiosity and, and, you know, become a better human. So I hope it's the first trip of many for you internationally. It's, it's an expensive hobby, but it never, ever has not paid off for me. And I've traveled the world, and I continue to do it. So I think it's excellent, and you should be really thankful for the, for the guidance of your teacher, too, to, to help you through all that. That's amazing. It sounds like a great trip. I can tell by the smiles on your faces and the way you're communicating about it. So, tell your friends. Get the travel bug.
Yeah, that, that was a great presentation. First of all, I'm so glad to hear about all the compliments you received about these kids, and I love how you said, "You're not just representing you and your family and your school, but your country as well." And, and, and that's terrific to hear. And for you, young ladies, it sounds like it was just a fantastic trip and learning experience, and I really want to congratulate you on your four-plus years, I guess, of, of taking Chinese and sticking with it. And it sounds like it's gonna be more part of your life when you go to college, and I just think it's terrific. Thank you.
Yeah, for me, you know, getting the feedback that our students were characterized by the adjectives of respect and resilience resonates. I think, again, to the point where, when you, when you do travel, particularly out of the hemisphere, you know, to, to the east, you know, and this idea of, of honor and of respect, and of a recognition for seniority, right? You know, in the West, sometimes we highlight and glamorize youth, whereas other cultures, I think wisely, have, are more deferential to elders in, in the society. And so, the fact that you conducted yourself with class in your travels resonates. And so the fact that you conducted yourself with class in your travels resonates. Uh, and I'm just interested in your fluency and how that was impacted, uh, being immersed in a, in a, in a culture. You can go ahead and respond.
So this year, my independent study is more based in listening and translating. So I haven't spoken Chinese or, um, on the trip, I hadn't spoken it for like eight, nine months. Um, and I had to do some refreshing on the plane with my saved Quizlets, reviewing some of like, Leshar calls it the survival Chinese, knowing like where is the bathroom? Things like that. Uh, I, I know like the basic conversational stuff, I can never forget that. It's ingrained. We start class every day with that. Um, but yeah, we like, we learned units on how to order food and how to buy things, asking how much does something cost? Um, do you have change? Things like that. So when we were buying food and, you know, buying souvenirs in the marketplaces, we used a lot of that language. And um, by the end of it, I was like, oh my gosh, this is, this is funny. Uh, when we were going back into customs in the U S, I could not stop speaking Chinese. And this man was asking us the questions. He was like, how many people were on your trip? And I was like, ah. And I kept speaking in Chinese and I was, oh, we're in, we're in the U S now. And then I kept saying xie jian, that's thank you. And you use it all the time, um, in Taiwan. It's just, um, it's like the general, when someone does anything, you're like xie xie, thank you. Or is that, yeah, xie jian is goodbye, xie xie is thank you. And we were leaving customs in the U S and I kept saying xie xie. I, I could not stop.
That's great. And lastly, um, I'm interested, uh, the Tai Chi and this idea, was that incorporated in your instruction? Because one of the things that I've seen, uh, that I think is quite helpful is this incorporation of movement breaks, um, in eastern education within the, within the class day. So was the Tai Chi just an exercise that you did? Or was that somehow, uh, and I think rightly, uh, because we do need to move and get away from the flickering images on the screen, um, was that incorporated in your academic day?
Uh, for specifically the Tai Chi, it was, um, it was sort of like a one-off thing. Like we went there to do specifically Tai Chi. But like when we went to the high school, they like, they actually had like the separate time to do recess, to do sports, play volleyball, even jump rope, whatever they wanted. And I think that, yeah.
Their high school has recess. A little different structure.
Yeah, everyone comments on how in China and Taiwan, they have such long school days. But being there, we realized that, uh, they spend probably about the same amount of time in the classroom learning as we do. But they're at school building community in other ways through sports and activities that are school-based instead of after school going to football practice, or, or you know, like a club lacrosse team off Cape. They like, yeah, and they do it with each other. It's really, really interesting.
Awesome job. Awesome presentation. Your smiles say it all. And I, I always like to think about how we can be inventive in education. And the best way to do that is like the pathways, like it's as important what you like as much as what you don't like. You know what I mean? So for you to say, yeah, like I was thinking, taking Mandarin in, in college, but like this, that's like, that warms the cockles of my cold heart, obviously, honestly, because it's like that, like is that excitement, that fire in your eye for something is what we all hope to get for, as, as educators, like if educators can do that, that's what they look for, right? So, um, I always, it's funny, in, in Bo Wu, you know what I think of, how great I think you do. Every time you come up, um, so my son took four years of Mandarin in high school. He went on to college, took four years and got a, got a minor in it. Um, and he was kind of thinking, you could do all kinds of things with that. Like it's the second most popular language in the world. He's in business. Like you wouldn't really think of putting them together. Um, and he was planning on doing the culture, going to, to mainland China and doing the semester of the year abroad. Fortunately COVID happened, so he couldn't do it. But like, what you're gonna realize if you decide to take it in college is how great your teacher is. Cause his first three years of college were a review. Literally his, he, he was taking two classes, he got a minor in it. He was gonna do it like a certificate in it. He ended up getting a minor in it because his first three years of Mandarin in college ended up, he, he ended up getting As in every class. He didn't have to do a lot of studying because in the teacher, like he became almost like the assistant teacher in the college for it because he knew it that well. So what you're gonna realize is she is, and I've always said this, Bo Wu is literally teaching you college level, uh, Mandarin, like literally. And that's what he was like, it was like, well, how's it going? And he's like, it's still a review. And the next semester would be like, how's it going? And it'd be like, it's, so like, you're phenomenal at what you do. Um, the fact that the kids are as excited as they are about, and it's a really hard language to learn. Um, that's why a lot of kids shy away from it. But great job. Excellent. I'm glad you had a blast. I'm glad we could do our little tiny part in making it happen for you. But thank you for coming and telling us about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate your taking the time to spearhead the trip and supervise them. I'm sure you were exhausted when you got home and that your family missed you. So I appreciate that. Thank you for presenting. It was great. Thank you. Thank you. All right, moving on to 3.2, approved school committee meeting minutes of March 18th, 2024.
Move to approved school committee meeting minutes of March 18th, 2024.
I'll second.
Have an emotion and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 3.3, public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and 30 minutes total. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement where the individual may request an item be placed on a future agenda. The chair will also allow public comment at her discretion during the meeting. Is anybody here for public comment? Seeing no one, public comment is closed. Item 3.4, school committee comments and subcommittee liaison reports. We'll start with Jen.
I'm actually good today. Thank you.
Peter?
Yeah, also, thank you.
Andre?
Kathy, I have some comments and then I have slides. Would you like me to go all at once?
Uh, you can do your comments. And then we'll go back to the slides.
Thank you, Kathy. Um, and so I wanted to, uh, address, um, a current issue in the state that's of great importance, I think for all districts, which is, um, the chapter 70, uh, in inflation index, essentially the amount of aid that we are able, um, to receive from, from the state. Uh, this past week, I took part in a conference call with school committee members, district superintendents, municipal financial officers and city mayors addressing the school funding formula. A flaw in the chapter 70 school aid formula is putting at risk both continued recovery from COVID learning loss and a core commitment to the Student Opportunities Act, that districts have the resources they need to support educators in providing high quality learning opportunities for all students. Along with fellow school committee members, I've also, uh, I've also connected with local legislators serving on Beacon Hill, and we're partnering to address the chapter 70 aid formula in order to provide funding that keeps pace with current and future inflation. Um, additionally, uh, I had the opportunity to attend the Know Your Rights Education Law Presentation. This took place at the junior senior cafeteria, right at Barnstable High School. And I think allowing, uh, having this centralized location, uh, allowed many community members and local elected officials, uh, to be in attendance. It was a free forum for parents, caretakers and students, providing legal context and resources on topics including special education, school discipline, bilingual instruction, bullying, and also homelessness. Uh, and so it was good that we were able to have this, uh, event in Barnstable. And I think many people learned about the rights that they have, uh, for themselves and their students in education. Thank you.
Mike?
So, um, we met for the, um, subcommittee for the facilities. Um, and we talked about, so we're kind of breaking it up. We're looking, we've been looking at the, um, condition of our facilities. Now we're starting to look at space and conditions. Um, so the first thing we looked at was our long-term, you gotta kind of break it in the long-term, midterm and short-term. Um, so we looked at long-term. Uh, we kind of talked a lot about, um, maybe going forward with, um, building a new school at some point. And that process is somewhere between at the minimum eight years and then on from there. Um, so it's kind of a long-term down the road. And it has to have a lot of, a lot of stuff that hap, has to happen. So it was a very, very big preliminary conversations about that. Um, and if it's something that, that is feasible or goes forward, it's a long process, but a lot of people was input. So I don't want anybody getting concerned, be like, oh my God, they said that there, it's just one option, one conversation and one, one thing to look at. Um, so it, it's worth a conversation. I mean, because schools can't last forever. And so it's, it's a conversation to do our due diligence and look at everything and kind of throw everything against the wall and see what sticks. Um, we had that conversation. Um, it kind of was left where our facilities, we have a, uh, we got the, uh, facilities assessment report last year and we still have that, um, uh, contractor who comes to our meetings. And he was gonna get, like, kind of put a timeline together about when you would have to do things for that. Um, so like I said, it's, it's just, it's, I, I believe in talking about everything. It's not about what I agree with, what I don't agree with, it has nothing to do with me. It's about us as a town. So, um, we had a, that was that meeting. Our meeting was all about that. Um, our next meeting is April 25th at 8:00 AM. It'll be on Zoom. It's open to the public. Um, and, um, we haven't really, I haven't figured out an agenda yet, but I'm sure we'll be looking at, to be completely honest with you, probably the midterm or the short-term. Um, cause we gotta have the conversation about, okay, that's long-term, but what about, what about today's needs? Um, so that's obviously where we're gonna go also. Um, I don't know if that'll exactly be the agenda item, but it'll be somewhere probably in that, in that genre. Um, other than that, that's all I have. Oh, Jen, do you have anything to chime in? You're the, you're on that committee too?
I might add, um, yeah, I'm thankful that we're looking at the, um, replacement costs or a capital plan of some sort to a capital campaign or an override to, to fix some of the schools' issues that we have at this rate. I just don't see a sustainable way where we can continue to fix what's broken and not bankrupt ourselves. So I think it's time to seriously look at that. And what I'd really like to do over the course of the next few years is, um, is invite the public into, um, to the conversation and, and build some trust and talk about, you know, the human capital, the most important thing we have are the kids in the schools and that we need to provide them with, um, you know, a, a winning atmosphere, you know, a good place to learn. And not that we don't have a good place to learn now, we do. It's just that if we don't get it together, the other schools on Cape are gonna eat our lunch. There's a bunch of new ones. And we need to make sure we have excellent quality in our buildings as well as with our teachers. And I think it's just really important that we start, um, bringing the public into the conversation and talking about that. Um, and, and really amplifying the conversation a lot. I think it's time. So that's all. Thank you. And I'm, I'm glad we're looking at that.
Okay. Um, Subcommittee on Policy Revision is meeting this Friday at 1:00. I was scheduled to meet with the NIOSC team the other day and got tied up in a meeting at work. Um, so I'm trying to get that rescheduled. I felt terrible, but it, it just was something that I couldn't avoid. I was, um, fortunate to be able to attend Newsies over the weekend and it was not this weekend, last Saturday. It was wonderful as always. Mary Barth and her crew does such a fabulous job. And, um, we saw some talent of our teachers. Uh, and, and it was just wonderful. I love those productions. So hopefully they'll continue. I too attended the meeting, uh, last Friday about the chapter 70 inflation, inflation adjustment. Um, to piggyback, I don't want to repeat what Andre said, but just to, um, give a shout out to Haverhill School Committee Member Thomas Granaman, uh, who's spearheading this effort and actually wrote the proposal for the, the funding, new funding proposal. To explain it for the public, there is currently a cap at 4.5% on what the budget level can increase to. And inflation over the past several years was increasing at a higher rate. With the ESAR funding, the first couple of years, it wasn't felt because there were dollars that were provided above and beyond. So it kept that funding, um, uh, even though the funding amount was not really sufficient, the ESAR made up for it. Now that ESAR funding is gone, we're now feeling the pinch and it impacts the funding moving forward. So the whole premise of the proposal is to get the cap removed so that we're fully funded with the inflation rate moving from year to year. So, um, the other reason it's so important for this to move forward is that there's other funding that is tied to the foundation budget amount that, um, is impacted when we don't get it. So, uh, I'll continue to work with him and advocate and do whatever he feels we need to do as a team to work to get that funding. A couple of weeks ago, in between meetings, I had the opportunity to visit three of the elementary schools, B W B, B C I S and Enoch Cobb Early Learning Center. Um, two things stood out. At B C I S, um, we hit on the day, visited on the day they were having their enrichment celebration. Jim was with us and Sarah. And it was really great to see the families, the parents, the students and, um, getting along the same line as our Hong Kong travelers. You could hear a pin drop in the H Y C C when Kathy Milne put her hand up like this, which was so impressive to me because to corral a group of people and have it come to silence is always amazing. Um, we were able to see the student ambassadors at that young level, um, stand up in front of the large crowd and, um, present each one of their different enrichment areas. So that was, um, a great, a great opportunity. And then at the early learning center, we were there the day that they were celebrating their one book, one school. Um, I can't remember the name of the dog, but it was about a story about a dog. And so they were having a, a noisy dog party and later sent some videos, which I meant to, um, send to Jen to see if we could, um, show. But the kids, the little ones dancing like crazy in the hallways. Although when I first saw it, I thought, who's having more fun, the teacher or the student? But it was great to, to, um, hit those schools on those days. And I think Barkus, thank you. It was, uh, what was the name of the book? Just Barkus, Birthday for Barkus or something. But it, it was great. Great to see it. Great to see the little ones in that integrated learning environment. And that's all I have. So item 3.5.
Go to Andre.
Oh, Andre, sorry.
Yes, the clicker. Do we have the clicker somewhere? I'll meet you halfway, Jen. Uh, so thank you very much, Barnstable. It's a large, we are a large, we are diverse and we're a dynamic school district. So even though it's only been, uh, one fortnight, uh, since, uh, our, our last meeting, uh, our students and staff members have been active in their pursuit of excellence. So Ms. Sinclair's class at Barnstable, West Barnstable Elementary were honored at the Cape Cod Museum of Arts Through Your Eyes exhibit. The class collaborated on a mural for Black History Month in the style of Christian Robinson and Romare Bearden. Uh, congratulations to Ms. Sinclair's class on being selected. Staying at Barnstable, West Barnstable Elementary, uh, third grade student ambassadors stopped by kindergarten to assist the district's youngest learners, uh, with an English language arts project. Uh, we're gonna move over to Barnstable Community Innovation School where grade one students were in for a wonderful surprise. Uh, Reed Happy, a local nonprofit organization, visited classrooms to share their love of reading. Each B C I S first grader received a Mo Wilhelm's book and handmade pillowcase to support reading at home. Uh, the presentation came soon after their field trip, um, to see the elephant and piggy play. Uh, thank you, um, Mar Ambrose and the entire Reed Happy organization. We're gonna head over to Centerville Elementary now, where third grade gateway students have been learning about the importance of a growth mindset. Very good, they're learning the importance of a growth mindset and how we can grow our brains by preserving through challenges. With this STEAM lesson, students created a Play-Doh model of the brain while learning how different parts of the brain function together as an organ. Sorry, I skipped a slide, let me get back on track. Thanks to the Cape Cod Bank for their donation of a bag chair for the Barnstable United Elementary School library. Your donation brings a splash of fun, color, and comfort to this learning environment. Okay, now we're ready to head over to Barnstable Intermediate School, where sixth graders were working. They're researching a local issue and they wrote children's books to educate and inform their younger counterparts. These students visited BWB and also Barnstable United Elementary School and read their books to the students. The project-based learning unit in our local impact class gave students an opportunity to share something that they care about in our community with fellow students across different school buildings. Okay, we're ready to move over to the high school now. The Cordial Eye Gallery, in collaboration with the Massachusetts Cultural Council, secured a grant to have local artist Nathaniel Batista work with four Barnstable High School art teachers and their students. The classes range from eighth grade to Fine Arts 1, 2, 3, and 4. Nathaniel worked with each class for two sessions, teaching students about history, about the history of graffiti art and having students take part in a hands-on lesson. Approximately 100 students worked with Nathaniel, and these students will also be taking a field trip on April 2nd, guess that was yesterday, to the Cordial Eye Gallery to work on three more legal graffiti walls in Massachusetts. Great job. We're going to stay at the high school. These are our Barnstable High School peer mentors, and they visited Ms. Swindler's sophomore English classes recently to speak with students about August Wilson's critically acclaimed play, Fences. Themes of upward mobility and cross-cultural exchange were prominent in the discussions, and students asked great questions and provided helpful context. Also at Barnstable High School, we have to recognize our seniors, Julia Magahelies, apologies in advance, and Owen Jones. These students were awarded the Superintendent's Academic Excellence Award. This is, this award is given to high school students who have distinguished themselves in their studies and, and conduct during their high school careers. Congratulations to both students. And in conclusion, two members of the Barnstable Youth Commission, Lake O'Reilly, who attends Barnstable High School, and Piper Hunt, who attended Barnstable Intermediate School, were selected for Governor Maura Healey's Youth Advisory Council. These students will be advising the governor and lieutenant governor on various issues impacting Massachusetts, including housing, the environment, education, and youth science. 60 students from each county in the Commonwealth will serve on the council and were proud that two from Barnstable were selected. Thank you.
Thank you, Andre. 3.5 Superintendent Report.
Thank you. I have a couple of items for you this evening. I was going to talk about the Governor's Youth Council as well, and I'll just add one piece that I don't think you mentioned, but you may have, and I apologize if it's a duplicate. But there are 60 young people on the Governor's Youth Council, only four of which are from Barnstable County. So these are two of the four students representing our region. So congratulations, and we are really proud of you. I wanted to elaborate a little bit about NIASC, which has been talked about twice this evening. NIASC stands for New England Association of Schools and Colleges, and it is the accrediting body, the accrediting organization in our region that accredits high schools and colleges. And just to, you know, put a little bit of emphasis here, our high school is undergoing its accreditation, and the visitors are part of the collaborative conference visit. The, this is one part of the accreditation process, but up until this point, BHS faculty and staff have worked really, really hard over the past several months in preparation for this visit. They conducted a self-study against the NIASC standards for re-accreditation and prepared a report in advance of the visiting team's arrival. When the visiting team was here, they observed classrooms, they talked to students, they talked to families, they talked to faculty and staff, and they talked to administrators. And they will be taking the evidence that the self-study puts forward, as well as what they observed themselves, and they'll put it together in a report of commendations and recommendations, which will pave the way for continuous improvement of Barnstable High School over the next decade until the next accreditation timeframe. I will tell you in advance that the high school faculty and staff voted on four priority areas. They're required to vote on three priority areas in advance of the collaborative conference, and they added a fourth one. This includes focusing on curriculum, having a guaranteed and viable written curriculum in a consistent format, ensuring all pathway programs have advisory boards, which they expanded to talk about access to our pathway programs, bringing, bringing awareness to the needs of the facilities and the school building, and focusing on equitable opportunities and outcomes among our students. So appreciate that our student envoys had a good experience sharing matters related to the high school. We at Central Office did have an opportunity to meet with the visitors as part of the collaborative conference, and we look forward to their report, which usually takes several months for them to put together. Earlier today, there was a press conference over at the YMCA Cape Cod that we were really honored to be hosting. This was part of Governor Healey's Gateway to Pre-K Initiative. Barnstable had applied for and has received a planning grant, which will assist in expanding pre-K opportunities within, within Barnstable. Her goal is to make universal pre-K more accessible in key priority areas, including gateway cities, but also in rural communities. It was a very well-attended event. There was a lot of elected officials, a lot of early childhood supporters there, members from Head Start and the YMCA, the governor herself. And we had a really nice time announcing this collaboration. Came about very quickly, and Andre attended, and it was a really, a really great event. And we thank the governor for her support. The grant will help us to plan public-private partnerships to support additional pre-K services to young children in Barnstable. And then lastly, I'll send a note home to families, but on Monday, April 8th, we are going to witness, not a total eclipse, but a partial solar eclipse, when the moon passes between the sun and the earth, causing a shadow that will, in this area, partially block the sun's light. Although we will not have the totality, the partial eclipse will be visible during the time period of approximately 2:15 to 4:40. Looking directly at the sun can cause eye damage, so we do want to bring awareness to this. So asking families and faculty and staff to remind students to take care, and if they're going to view the eclipse, to do through, do so through the safety of special eyewear. Through some quick action on the part of Assistant Superintendent Harmon and our principals, we thank Steve Hesslinger and the Cobb Trust, who has offered to purchase eyewear for our elementary students, so they will be able to view the eclipse safely. And glasses, special glasses are also being made available for interested students at BIS. At the high school, athletic games and practices have been pushed back to 4:30.
Any questions or comments? Jen?
It's actually for, for Andre. How come some people are really tall and skinny and some people are really wide in your, in your pictures? And how do you get to be tall and skinny?
I believe that's the camera angle, and I am certainly in search of the answer, as I've never been the first, and the latter is becoming increasingly difficult.
I just have a Chris question, Kathy.
Go ahead.
So the preschool, universal, is that like, so is the governor saying that we have to offer? Like, what is that? I guess where are we heading with that? Like, is it like every kid is, every third and fourth grader is going to have preschool offered to them free? Or like, what is that? I know it just came out.
It's making preschool available at low or no cost to families within Barnstable. And it's not solely kind of a public, a public effort, it's also involving private, public-private partnerships. So the YMCA, Kitty College, there's a early learning center.
That's okay, yeah, that's okay.
But it's a way to collaborate across the region.
So with the planning part, you're going to be like, it's for the district to have the money to go out and either talk to other preschools in the community, also what we need to do within house to?
Identify opportunities to do more preschool.
Even within our own buildings?
With, I think we're looking at TV to wait and see with the planning, but what opportunities exist locally to provide more access to preschool.
Okay. Is there a certain amount of numbers, like, that you have to give it to, like, is there a certain threshold to meet? Or is it every, every third, three-year-old and four-year-old, four, yeah, three and four-year-old?
I think it's mostly about opportunity. So not every student will necessarily kind of enroll through this program, but it's to really increase opportunities for low and no cost preschool.
Okay, I was just kind of curious, because when you say universal preschool, it was like, ah.
Yeah, we don't have the space for that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Okay. Everybody all set? So we're at item 3.6, Assistant Superintendent Kristen.
Thank you. So I had the opportunity to see the amazing Newsies production last week, I think it was last week, Friday, March 22nd. And I just have to congratulate the drama club for another successful production from beginning to end. The talents of the cast and crew were so clearly evident. The singing, the choreography, the lines, the stage changes, the backdrops, the props. This was a professional-level production. And you know, whenever possible, I like to provide the numbers behind the story. So in this case, and these are rough, there were 58 cast and crew that pulled the show together. Rehearsal started in January, which is just two and a half months to prepare and put together that production. But countless hours, building from two hours after school each day to five hours after school as the show approached each day. And rough again, and I have a feeling this is an underestimate, but 150 hours in advance of that opening day, which I just think speaks to the passion and the dedication of the students and the advisors and the staff that supported. I would like to, you know, we have an incredibly talented drama club, as we saw, and they are supported by two talented club advisors, Mary Barth, who is the director of the show, and Molly Shanahan, the producer, along with the support of countless BPS staff members who contributed in so many ways, whether it was in the show, behind the scenes, choreography from, from beginning to end. So congratulations to all. It really was a great show to watch. I want to thank the school committee for approving our Student Opportunity Act Plan at our last meeting, and this has been submitted to DESI, and now we await their feedback. Last meeting, I provided you with an update on the February Math Academy, and we are right now on the doorstep of the April Math Academy that will run Tuesday through Friday during the April vacation. We are seeing a slightly lower enrollment for the April vacation. I think people are hoping the sun might shine and the rain will stop and would like to be outside, but we'll see, that remains to be seen. But it has allowed us to extend the program to include grade three in the BUES program, as we did in February. We will also have the sessions for students in grades six and seven to be held at BIS. As a reminder, the academies offer an intensive week of math instruction. Teachers design engaging lessons that develop conceptual understanding by presenting mathematics through a context. Through the grant, students are provided lunch and transportation so that they, the ease of attending the academy. And then addition to that, just this week, we, we received notification from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that we've been awarded, again, the grant to support another summer acceleration academy. So the program, this program actually includes a literacy and a math opportunity. So we will plan to run a elementary literacy academy and a grades three through five math academy during the summer. Typically, it's around the week before school starts, a bit of a kickoff, boot camp before the year. But we have been notified much more in advance of when we typically learn about the summer academy grants, so we're excited to have the additional time to plan, give staff notice so that they can make their decisions about the, the summer and hopefully be available to teach. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Questions, comments? No? All right. Item 4.0, Consider New Business. Item 4.1. Oh, old business. Oh, I said it wrong. Old business. Item 4.1, Delete Policy IE Organization of Instruction. I did review these at the last meeting quickly. These next several policies are recommended based on the MASCE reviews.
Move to delete Policy IE Organization of Instruction as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Have a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Item 4.2, Delete Policy IMA Teaching Activities and Presentations. It's being deleted, as was the last, because it's outdated and the content is included in other policies.
Move to delete Policy IMA Teaching Activities and Presentations as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Have a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 4.3, Revise Policy BEDH Public Comment at School Committee Meetings. There was a slight change in the language.
Move to revise Policy BEDH Public Comment at School Committee Meetings as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Have a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 4.4, Create Policy CHA/CHC Development and Dissemination of Procedures. This new policy simply combines two previous policies that both consisted of a sentence or two.
Move to create Policy CHA/CHC Development and Dissemination of Procedures as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Have a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 4.5, Delete Policy CHA Development of Regulations.
Move to delete Policy CHA Development of Regulations as presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 4.6, Delete Policy CHC Regulations Dissemination.
Move to delete Policy CHC Regulations Dissemination as presented in tonight's material.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 4.7, Revise Policy IHBF Homebound Instruction. Slight language change based on certified teachers now being replaced with licensed teachers.
Move to revise Policy IHBF Homebound Instruction as presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 4.8, Revise Policy IHBH Alternative School Programs. The initial introductory paragraph was removed.
Move to revise Policy IHBH Alternative School Programs as presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 4.9, Revise Policy IHBHE Remote Learning. The language was updated to reflect current practice.
Move to revise Policy IHBHE Remote Learning as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Have a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 5.0, no, new business, I guess, correct?
Financing facilities?
Finance and facilities?
Right. 5.0, conduct finance and facilities. Item 5.1, adopt the fiscal year '25 school budget. Sarah and Chris?
Great. Can I just give an update from here? It's not a huge presentation, but there are a few changes from the proposed budget that was presented at the budget hearing. If I could have the clicker. That'd be great. So I'll be brief. So tonight's April 3rd, it is on your agenda for a vote related to adoption after a long process that goes back to kind of the winter timeframe of putting the budget together. There are a few adjustments tonight, and I'll go through those just to highlight them. The revenue sharing allocation has increased slightly. I think it's by something like $35,000. This is in response to the crossing guard positions coming from the Barnstable Police Department to the Barnstable Public Schools. And so that funding would go to help support two crossing guards that we have been advertising for. One related to West Main Street and the other out on route on 28 by the Barnstable Intermediate School. No changes related to the priorities of the budget process this year or the site department priorities and submissions. Based on what I had just shared, the numbers here do vary slightly, taking into account a slightly higher appropriation based on this transfer from the police department's budget to the schools. And so this would also be updated with that bottom line in terms of the final figure for the general fund. No changes related to recommendations on retaining ESAR-funded positions, but I did leave the yellow highlights as they had changed from the March 6th to the March 20th presentation. No changes from March 20th, the budget hearing with respect to recommended investments. The yellow highlights reflected changes between March 6th and March 20th in terms of that reduced recommendation of number of PCAs. Similarly, no changes on this slide related to March 20th and the budget hearing, but the yellow denotes the change from March 6th to March 20th in terms of increasing the athletic department's budget, which we offset from savings at your suggestion. In terms of offsets and reallocations, this is a summary page. The yellow changes are reflected from March 6th to March 20th. So we are still proposing the same order of magnitude in terms of these offsets. But the yellow does note any changes between March 6th and March 20th. But we do have some adjustments. The school committee's budget hearing is an opportunity for the community and interested stakeholders to speak to various line items in the budget. And I did look into a number of things based on the budget hearing, including your comments related to the K-7 Library Media Specialist, ACE and Project Excel as our alternative learning programs, and have some additional information to share with you with respect to the school attorney position. In taking your input and feedback back, we spent the last two weeks or so really thinking about alternatives related to, related to some of these recommendations. And you'll see a strikeout here to sort of, I guess, reinstate or not reallocate the K-7 Library Media Specialist. In lieu, as one of the school committee members said, that would need to come from another position. So we looked really carefully at what those might be. And this comes with some risk, but felt that there is a vacant ACE teacher position that might be a better recommendation for you to consider in terms of reallocating. So we would have instead of six FTEs allocated to ACE, our alternative learning program, that would become four. We currently have 28 students enrolled in that alternative learning program. I'm reluctant to pare it back too far because I want to make sure that we give this program the best chance to get on its feet. I think that as an alternative learning program, it has a place. We are working hard with the high school to delineate the criteria and the services of Project Excel, the criteria and services of the ACE program. And I think ACE came about very quickly. It also came about at a time where the employment market has been very, very difficult for employers. That may change. We may have more success in staffing ACE than we've seen in the past two years. So I do want to give it the best chance to really take, take hold. But on the other hand, you know, having a position in the budget that remains vacant is an opportunity cost elsewhere. So these are some of the things. And this, this is one very specific example, but these are some of the things that we've been weighing across the district, including, including in last year's budget. But this is a new proposal for you to consider with respect to having the Library Media Specialist K-7 position continue forward and instead we'll have two fewer ACE FTEs. I do want to take a careful look at both alternative learning programs over the next year and make sure that, that we're serving students' needs adequately and effectively. So we did take a look at that at your request. As far as the Library Media Specialist K-7 position, as I had noted, you know, the budget hearing is an opportunity for stakeholders and the public to, to make comments and, and have a voice and weigh in. And I want to, I guess, first off, I want to note the timing of it, which has been, I think, really hard for us. We never saw the floor kind of falling out from underneath the Chapter 70. We were expecting $3 million based on the estimate from the town, and secretly I thought it would be higher. That's what happened last year. And I, I did think it was going to be higher than $3 million based on some of the calculations that our association can put forward. Nobody saw the inflation cap going the way that it did and the Chapter 70 coming in so low. So that to be said, I want to really emphasize and recognize and appreciate the Town of Barnstable supporting that additional $3 million piece. But I could argue, like, very vehemently that, like, we're cutting down to, to bear services. And we really need the additional Chapter 70 funding. Our foundation budget is going up because of our, because of the adequacy of what education means today. In particular, the way the Student Opportunity Act intended, related to special education, related to economically disadvantaged students, English learners, health insurance costs, and mental health. So, so we never, we never saw this coming and really appreciate the advocacy that the school committee is undertaking. And it's going to take all of us, you know, kind of singing from the same sheet to, to make a difference with our legislators, who did ask about it today at the governor, at the governor's press conference. I had several people come up to me and ask about, about state funding. So I just want to say, like, we, we were very surprised. And then as the process went along, the, the gap to close continued to increase. And so it, it took us by surprise. Additionally, I think I want to point out that this reinstatement represents, I think, potential. There's been a fragmented history of the Library Media K-7, both the position as well as services, and COVID was in the mix through it all. So the recommendation isn't reflective of any individuals by any stretch of the imagination. And really is, I think, came forward from the team as it relates to some structural pieces that I think we need to take a look at, one of which is space. The library media spaces are often, you've been in the buildings and seen many of them are in cafeterias. And so one structural issue to confront is space. And then just taking a look at schedules and student services and, you know, what potential can we envision? And I'm excited for that. So I just wanted to kind of comment because people came forward and, and made some really great points. And so the recommendation or proposal here is to bring that back into the budget. As it relates to the position of school attorney, wanted to bring back some data for you and also elaborate a little bit more about the financial, the financial components. Prior to 2004, Barnstable had all outside counsel and did not have an in-house attorney. Between 2004 and 2016, there was a consistent in-house attorney with a longstanding relationship in the district. There was a period of two years where there was no in-house attorney and there was outside counsel. And then we've had kind of back and forth with in-house counsel, out-house, outside counsel until '21, returning to an in-house model with a supporting outside counsel services. So from a financial perspective, just wanted to paint the picture that we're spending approximately $200,000 annually on attorney fees and, and legal services. And the proposal here looks back at some of the data at what the district spent when we had outside counsel, which was $140,000. So I think conservatively, we could be looking at $60,000 in the budget. But I would anticipate that that could be even higher just based on putting some tighter controls in place related to access to outside counsel. And then to a question about what the firms charge, just wanted to sort of be transparent with the community that outside counsel is $245 per hour. So that is the details, some greater details that you had asked for related to these reallocations. There are some slight changes. I didn't highlight them, but there would be some slight changes for tonight as it relates to the recommended budget by Cost Center. And similarly, some minor changes based on DESI function. But overall, tracking very similarly to what you had seen before, which is a just under 8% increase over FY '24. Happy to take any questions.
Questions?
Oh, yes. You know, I think having the Library Media Specialist included in the budget is the right move, given the importance of libraries and the emphasis that we're seeing on curriculum currently. You know, and again, in terms of the school attorney, you provided the information, looking back historically. Essentially, for the last 20 years, we've had a school attorney since 2004. And I'm interested, Superintendent Devers, I believe, who oversaw the renovations at the high school. You're saying that from, because, you know, I graduated in 2000, that we didn't have a school attorney from pre, prior to then? You know, that's where it gets a little bit murky. But my point is, since time immemorial, we've had a school attorney. And so I, I look at it as a seismic shift, not having a school attorney. And so my first question is, who do we as a school committee go to for legal advice?
So, great question. With outside counsel, you would proceed through the chair to access outside legal services. So all of that goes through the chair? Or kind of internal to the district, it would go through the superintendent? You have a policy related to that? And recently, there, there was a subcommittee of the school committee that put out an RFP for legal services. We currently have switched outside counsel. We have two firms that we have the ability to work with based on a letter of engagement. One is the firm Merrick O'Connell. They're out of Worcester. They would handle kind of general education, including labor relations, personnel matters. They also have attorneys that focus on things like contracts, facilities. And then the other firm is Nutella, McAvoy, and Joyce, which is more of the student services, special education, Title IX, discrimination, harassment. And they kind of complement each other in that they have different specialties between those two firms.
Thank you, Sarah. So again, coming back to this, I know when we had the conversation in this community about our name and mascot, the school attorney was very involved in that process. So hypothetically speaking, and I'm hearing some commentary, but as somebody who followed those proceedings very closely, I do remember our school attorney was asked for clarification, so on and forth, as we worked through a very important issue in this community. So if we were to have a hot-button issue where school committee members needed legal counsel during a meeting, you're saying then we would essentially be relying on the superintendent because the chair is a member of the school committee? Am I understanding that correctly?
So in other districts that might not have in-house counsel, if there was something in the moment, like at a meeting, it might be the superintendent or it might be the chair. It may depend on the, depend on the matter. That's who would be sort of there in the moment to kind of address it. But if it weren't in the moment, you know, there would be the ability to consult with an attorney. And as it relates to the matter of mascots, there are districts who have changed mascots and gone through that process with outside counsel and not in-house counsel.
Now, thank you, Dr. Hearn. There are also districts that went through that process and retained their mascot with inside counsel. So, you know, I'm thinking, is there, you know, because we're down to the wire here. We have a town council meeting tomorrow, which I'll be at. You know, and then we're, I, I'm just, I'm very leery. We've had something in place for so long. And then now at the last minute, you know, I, I'm not feeling comfortable approving a budget without a central piece up here on this dais. It, it just doesn't sit right. I mean, so what, what are our options? Do we, do we give another budget to the town council? You know, I'm, or do we, this is, you know, we have a budget now without a school attorney and this is, you know, that this is, for me, there's just, had I known this earlier in the process? I'm just, you know, a, a school attorney is distinctive from other roles in the district. You know, we talked about a number of staff members at different schools, but a school attorney, you know, that's an important part of central office. And learning about that reallocation at the last minute, given the importance that it's had previously in this district, as I said, historically, over the last 20 years, if not further, I have serious reservations.
I can address one, excuse me, one question you had, which is, you know, what do we do? At, at various points, we have approved positions during the school year. And it's, just as with any position that we want to bring back or create new, we have that ability as a school committee. There were difficult choices that had to be made. It was made at towards the end of the budget process simply because it wasn't on the radar to make that change until the numbers constituted finding, finding funding for student-facing positions. And so just as we heard with the K-7 librarian, everything is a give or a take. So it's, it's a difficult decision. It's a piece of the puzzle, as you say. But it's trying to get this balance, this budget balance so that when it goes to the town, we're able to get approval from the town. If, if we don't go in at a number at which the town can approve our budget, then we'll be going through the process again and finding more cuts. So it's, it was, all of the positions that had to be repurposed or eliminated were made only with that in mind.
Yeah, thank you, Kathy. And I concur in that it's just we have one position that directly affects central office. And to your point, we did find out about it at the last step. So I'm now in a position, whereas I, I agree with the overwhelming majority of this budget, but this, this last item, I, I have major, major. but this, this last item, I have major, major, you know, it's just historically, we've done things a certain way, and I don't know if I feel that now we need to have a situation where we don't have this important resource, and, you know, the currently constituted school committee and central office staff now have an additional responsibility. I don't know if we're putting ourselves in the best position there.
Jen?
Yes, I did some investigating on this issue because I also felt the way Andre feels about, you know, well, for me, it's more institutional knowledge than anything, and, and, you know, although I realize that because something's always been done that way isn't necessarily the reason to continue doing it that way. I am very protective of my hometown, and, and I really love Barnstable, and I want to put Barnstable in the best light possible. That said, I've spoken and done some research on, on the amount of school districts that actually farm out the attorney position, and it's astounding, like, I mean, and I think the reason for that is the specialization piece. So I've learned a lot as we go along this, and I'm the newest one up here, so I have a lot to learn always. And I hate to do away with any position, you know, when it, the access is that close, and like you say, central office is, you know, needs the support. I just wonder in this, let me back up. As a town councillor, I always appreciated a budget that was brought from the school committee, that, brought from the school committee, I'm sorry, that, you know, investigated every possible cost savings. And, you know, we've had a lot of challenges financially with this budget, and although it doesn't make me happy to, to vote in favor of it, I feel like the research that I've done has really, you know, put it, I'm in a better space about it now, having learned how many, how many school districts actually do farm it out. And the cost is the one thing, I, I just can't believe that $245 is the going rate because I'm paying more for that, more for my attorney than that, which means I'm getting ripped off, I guess. Have to look at that. But I do, I really want to keep a close eye on that cost because, you know, it, rough, rough figures, it's 1,000 hours. That's 25 weeks, right, of 40-hour week, work week. I just think that could skyrocket really quickly and get out of control. But, you know, I really feel like it's something that we, we need to look at, unfortunately. And if it doesn't work out, we bring it back in. You know? Thank you.
Peter, did you have something?
I know.
Oh, I thought I saw a movement. Okay. Mike?
I, I just appreciate the changes that were made, and, and I would agree with them.
I just want to say thank you, not just to you, but for everybody. Chris, the finance guy in the back row, thank you to everybody who, I know this was a really tough budget, and it, it, kind of the floor got dropped out at the last second, was kind of the perfect storm in a bad way. So being able to kind of go through it and think of it on your feet, I just have to thank everybody involved. Andre, I, so I was the chair of the school committee during, I had just become the chair of the school committee during the debate for war, and I'm not trying to sway you, we all have our own opinions. I could tell you, as the chair of the school committee during that, the attorney wasn't relied on. It wasn't really an attorney issue. Maybe in the meetings, there were some issues, maybe in the meetings, I don't remember. There was a lot going on then as the chair, but I could tell you from the chair seat, it wasn't any more reliance on the in-house attorney than a lot of other matters that I dealt with, that I, that, that we dealt with the school committee and I dealt with as the chair of the school committee. So I just kind of wanted, like, and I have worked, I don't know, I don't know when I became the chair, if we didn't have a, a, an in-house attorney. At some point, we did not have an in-house attorney when I was the chair. And as Jen said, I, when we, the last school attorney left, we had a long, at a meeting, had a long discussion if we were even going to go back to in-house attorney. So we've, like, I, I had had that conversation, Kathy was on it at the time, she'd just gotten on, and Joe. So I was astounded at how many places didn't have an in-house attorney. It's, it's, most don't. And I could tell you, just to kind of like give you some on how it works, as, as the superintendent said, if it's an issue with going through, there's a lot more put on the superintendent and the chair of the school committee as far as answering questions in the, in the now. If it's something super controversial, I know at one point, I think when we had that two-year gap, I don't think I was the chair, but I was on the school committee, and we, once in a while, if there was something really big, or something that we knew was going to be super controversial, we'd have the, in, we'd have the outside attorney come down and come to the meeting. So that, now granted, you're paying $245 per hour, I know, but that was something that would happen. So that, like, so if you're thinking about, like, hot-button issues and stuff, that's, I remember having an in-house attorney, the outside attorney coming down for things that we knew were coming. So that's just another, just to kind of, I'm just trying to answer some of your questions. So like, you kind of, you do what you do, but, but I'm just saying, I'm just trying to kind of make you, because you haven't necessarily had the questions answered, so I'm trying to answer your questions. So that's kind of what I'm trying to do. That's kind of the way it works.
All right, thank you. It's very helpful, and it provides the context. Again, you know, we have, we have a budget that's over $80 million, and, you know, I agree with the budget, you know, it's just, this is, just to highlight, you know, this, this is a notable departure from the way things have been done, and to Jen's point, you know, just because you've done all the, all the time doesn't mean that it's the best way of doing things. I just reiterate, it'd be very helpful for us to know sooner in the process about these type of changes, you know, before we have to, you know, to go ahead and improve an entire budget, however that has to take place going forward. I'm hopeful that that will be the way that we conduct ourselves, so that we can, again, have further dialogue, conversation, you know, if we're doing, making changes that are a departure from how we've done business for at least the last 20 years. So thank you, Mike.
Are there any other questions? All right.
I believe, looking at the agenda, I need to recuse myself.
Yep.
Due to I have a family member, just for complete transparency, I have a family member that works at High West, so I'm going to be stepping out and recusing myself from the High West portion of the budget, and therefore I will be back.
Move? Can I make a motion? Yep.
I'll move to adopt a budget of $4,820,243 for the Cost Center entitled Hyannis West Elementary School for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And now I need to...
Mike, you can come back.
I need to recuse myself from participating in the high school portion of the budget because I have a daughter who teaches at the high school.
Move to adopt the budget of $24,43, wait a minute. Oh, yeah. $24,43,479 for the Cost Center entitled Barnstable High School for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Peter, you can come back.
I tried to get down the stairs, I didn't make it in time. Kathy called me back before I got too far.
Move to adopt the total budget of $92,269,656 for the School Department for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, to be funded by an appropriation of $86,954,260, subject to change depending on the final state aid received by the town, and expenditure not to exceed $1,843,876 for a circuit breaker revolving fund, and expenditure not to exceed $300,000 from the transportation, transportation fee revolving fund, as expenditure not to exceed $750,000 from the school choice tuition revolving fund, and funds not to exceed $2,421,520 from the School Department savings account.
Yeah, I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 5.2, approve fiscal year 25 fee schedule.
Thank you, and thank you for your attention to the budget. So 5.2 is the FY '25 fee schedule being recommended to you this evening. It's in your packet. It does create some incremental increases as it relates to transportation fees, as well as high school athletic fees per your request, and aligns school lunch charges with DESI's, I guess, requirements for what we charge for second meals. Before and after care are at a slight increase as presented at the last meeting, and there is a small gate fee being proposed for athletics. As far as rental fees, just to close the loop with you on that, we are not recommending any changes at this time. We had done a pretty thorough review of comparable, comparable facilities, both in the region and then also kind of with the town, and, you know, some of the feedback that we get are that our rental fees are costlier than some nearby locations. I think part of that is reflective of the quality of our locations as well, so it sort of makes sense that we would charge more. Some of the recommendations that came forward, you know, involve sort of major, major changes, and I just, I think that we don't have any recommendations for kind of incremental changes to the fees tonight, but it is something that we take a look at on an annual basis. The big thing would be next year, the Symphony lease expires, and so we are taking a look at that for FY '26. I don't know that that would change the fee schedule, though, but there is an agreement that, that would be re-discussed and negotiated.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, is anybody else?
Any?
No. Just because I wasn't here two weeks ago, and I apologize because I wasn't here. So I know, like, everything is going up to $25, I see that. Is the amount charged per family changing, or is that staying? It says in, like, 2024, it says it is 400, or it says the 403, 50, 200, and doesn't say anything in FY '25. Are the amounts going up by $25 the max of what can be charged?
The max is proposed to go up. It's down below as a footnote.
Oh, okay.
So transportation fees continuing to be capped at two children per family per year, and athletic fees capped at 525 per family per year.
Sorry. Sorry, thank you.
It's in a different location.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Mike.
I'm sorry. Move to approve FY '25 fee schedule as presented in tonight's material.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 5.3, audit report on fiscal year '23 end-of-year financial reporting. Is Chris coming? Chris, do you have anything?
It's just informational.
Mm-hmm. Did anybody have any questions about the report? Nope?
Hi there, yep, just informational. We got a clean audit for our fiscal year '23 and satisfy all our reporting requirements to the state.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Item 5.4, approve the contract addendum for the interim director of facilities.
So asking for the school committee's approval this evening for an addendum for Kevin Maxim. He is currently under contract as the deputy director of facilities through June 30th of 2024. This addendum would change and modify the contract until June 30th, changing his title to interim director of facilities, starting on April 1st, with a adjusted salary.
Move to approve the contract addendum for the interim director of facilities, Kevin Maxim, as presented in tonight's material.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 5.5, approve grants, gifts, and donations.
Move to approve grants, gifts, and donations as presented in tonight's material.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 5.6, approval of accounts payable warrant, fiscal year '24, warrant number 40.
Move to approve accounts payable warrant, FY '24 warrant number 40, in the amount of $696,108.45.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'll abstain. And motion carries. Item 6.0, executive session, to approve the school committee executive session minute, minutes of March 18th, 2024, to hear a Barnstable Teachers Association grievance, to discuss strategy and preparation for the negotiations with the Barnstable Teachers Association, to discuss strategy and preparation for negotiations with Barnstable Administrators Organization, and to discuss strategy and preparation for negotiations with AFSMI, Maintenance, and Custodian Units.
I'll second that motion.
The motion was made, it requires a roll, and seconded, it requires a roll call vote. Jen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Open meeting portion is public, the public portion of tonight's meeting is adjourned.